All right, welcome to the special meeting of the King County Council for the week of July 1st. We've advanced our work here today in anticipation of Independence Day holiday. The clerk will call the roll. All right, your mic is not working over there, so you're gonna come forward.
Councilmember Balducci.
Here.
Councilmember Dunn.
Here.
Councilmember Gossett.
Here.
Councilmember Cole Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Lambert.
Here.
Councilmember Up the Grove. Councilmember Vaughn Wrightbauer. Mr. Chair.
Here. We're gonna dispense with a second flag salute, since we've done that once, and proceed to approval of the meeting minutes. Councilmember Balducci.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move approval of the minutes of June 26, 2019.
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Those are approved. Representative Dure has offered graciously water. I think Councilmember Vaughn Wrightbauer was looking for some water. Thank you so much. Turning now to our business item on the agenda and hearing and second reading of ordinances from standing committees and regional committees, I'd ask the clerk to read items five through 12 into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item five is proposed ordinance number 2019-0167, making a supplemental appropriation from the Public Transportation Fund of $1,075,000 to transit. Item six is proposed substitute ordinance number 2019-0190 relating to the, excuse me, annexation of approximately 199.32 acres of land into King County Water District Number 119, known as the Can Do Annexation for the Purpose of Water Service. Let me talk to you, seven.
Item number seven, proposed substitute ordinance 2019-0211, creating the lodging tax fund and adding a new section to KCC Chapter 4A-200. Item number eight, proposed substitute ordinance number 2019-0212, authorizing the executive to enter into the agreement for implementation of the building for equity program by and between King County and for culture. Item number nine, proposed substitute ordinance number 2019-0213, authorizing a supplemental appropriation of $20 million to the Cultural Development Authority, authorizing a supplemental appropriation of $20 million to the lodging tax fund. Item number 10, proposed substitute ordinance number 2019-0214 relating to the transfer of funds to the Cultural Development Authority and amending ordinance 14482. Item number 11, proposed ordinance number 2019-0235, authorizing the county executive to execute an interlocal agreement between King County and South King Fire and Rescue for provision of fire investigation services. And item number 12, proposed ordinance number 2019-0161 revising the corporate boundary of the city of Normandy Park to fully include southwest 168th Street and southwest 170th Street right away within the city as provided for in RCW 35A .21 .210.
All right, thank you very much for reading those into the record. We'll have one combined hearing on items five through 12. I'm opening the public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to comment today on items five through 12? Is there anybody that wishes to comment? Do we have anybody who signed up? No? All right, seeing nobody.
Mr. Chair?
Councilmember Up the Grove.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to verify it could be heard. Is the audio working?
Yes, we can hear you. Oh, you wanna verify that we can hear you? Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Up the Grove. Okay, I've closed the public hearing. Councilmember Balducci.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move adoption of the consent items number five through 10.
Okay, consent items five through 10 are before us. Clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Balducci.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Gossett. Councilmember Cole Wells.
Aye.
Councilmember Lambert.
Aye.
Councilmember McDermott.
Aye.
Councilmember Up the Grove.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn Wrightbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, the vote is nine ayes, zero noes.
All right, with the unanimous vote, we've adopted the consent agenda. Items five through 10 is published in today's agenda. Turning to matters from the Law and Justice Committee, item 11, Councilmember Gossett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move proposed ordinance 2019-0235.
All right, that's before us. Would you like to speak to it?
Yes, it's an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an interlocal agreement between King County and the South King County Fire and Rescue for provisions of fire investigation services.
Very good.
We had a chance to hear from them and asked a couple of questions, so.
All right, that's before us on a due pass recommendation. Any further comments? Clerk will call the roll on item 11.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Balducci.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Gossett.
Aye.
Councilmember Cole Wells.
Aye.
Councilmember Lambert.
Aye.
Councilmember McDermott.
Aye.
Councilmember Up the Grove.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn Wrightbauer. Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, the vote is nine ayes, zero noes.
All right, we've unanimously adopted proposed ordinance 2019-0235. Turning now to matters from our local service, regional roads and bridges committee chaired by Councilmember Lambert, item 12.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the proposed ordinance 2019-0161 with a due pass recommendation.
All right, Councilmember Lambert has moved adoption of 2019-0161. It seems fairly self-explanatory.
Yes, it's very exciting, and I hope it's the beginning of many more of these.
Is this an orphan roads issue?
This is an orphan road. This is one of our first orphan roads to get adopted, and we're hoping for lots more adoptions.
All right, it's adoption day here for Normandy Park. The clerk will call the roll on ordinance 2019-0161.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Balducci.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Gossett.
Aye.
Councilmember Cole Wells.
Aye.
Councilmember Lambert.
Aye.
Councilmember McDermott.
Aye.
Councilmember Up the Grove.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn Wrightbauer. Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, the vote is nine ayes, zero noes.
All right, ordinance number 2019-0161 has been adopted. Turning now to motions from our standing committees and regional committees for council action, consent items 13 and 14. Melanie, would you read those in?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 13 is proposed motion number 2018-0576 confirming the executive's appointment of Lily Gottlieb McHale to the King County Agriculture Commission. And item 14 is proposed motion number 2019-0170 confirming the executive's appointment of Kevin Scott Vanderberg to the King County Agriculture Commission.
Councilmember Balducci.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move adoption of, sorry, the consent agenda items 13 and 14.
Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Balducci.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Gossett.
Aye.
Councilmember Cole Wells.
Aye.
Councilmember Lambert.
Aye.
Councilmember McDermott.
Aye.
Councilmember Up the Grove.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn Wrightbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, the vote is nine ayes, zero noes.
The motions set forth that items 13 and 14 are adopted. Turning to the committee of the whole, item 15.
Mr. Chair, I move to relieve the committee of the whole of motion 2019-278.
Okay, the motion to take action, and that would be for the purpose of taking action on it today?
Yes.
All right, this is a reorg amendment. All in favor of relieving the committee of the whole, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
No.
Councilmember Gossett, okay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Melanie, read that item into the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 15 is proposed motion number 2019-0278, a motion relating to the organization of the council.
Okay, Councilmember Balducci, would you like to move the item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move adoption.
Okay, you've moved the item. Would you tell us what it does?
Thank you very much. This item has been shared around to offices, but it's possible that folks in the public will not know what this is, so I'm gonna give a little bit of a summary.
And I'm sorry to interrupt you, but is there a staff report, or is it in our packet, or is there a chart or something where we can follow along? Is that okay if Mr. Mum?
Please, I think I prefer it. Thank you.
I just wanna look nowhere to look.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Jeff Mum, Chief Policy Officer of the council, actually prepared a side-by-side that compares the current organizational motion and then all of the changes that are proposed, and then it is by line.
Is it in our packets?
It's not in your packet.
Oh, okay.
It was emailed out earlier, but I'm happy to distribute it to you.
Yes, I interrupted you there. Get the sheet.
No, no worries.
Please go ahead, tell us what you want us to do.
Thank you. So, in response somewhat to hiring issue that we had a couple of weeks ago, this proposal essentially continues some work that we had started down the road of already, and that is to make a very clear line of demarcation in how we manage the legislative branch employees. And the demarcation is between what you could call the policy or implementation side and the political or council side. What, in a nutshell, what this reorganization proposal does is it says that the council with, through the EAC as a recommending body, the Employment and Administration Committee as a recommending body, continues to recommend hire, and then the council hires the chief of staff, our chief legal advisor, and then the heads of what we're calling the independent agencies, which are the legislative branch agencies, such as the auditor, the ombudsman, the hearings examiner, et cetera. And then within those agencies, the head person who is appointed and hired by the council hires and manages their own personnel, and that means hiring, setting performance expectations, and discipline, or firing. There's a lot of detail behind that, including some appeals language. So, for example, if you, as today, if an employee is subject to a high-level suspension or termination by their boss, they can appeal that to the Employment Administration Committee and then to the council itself. But the whole idea is just to push the management of non-political office staff down to the heads of the section that they work for. For details, I'll let staff speak to it, but I would also be happy to answer any questions.
That was a good summary. I don't know, what I've done on the side-by-side is sort of divided it into hiring decisions and then discipline. I'm happy to walk through the changes, or however you want me to proceed.
Well, let's see, it's 12:26. We have a 1:30 committee of the whole meeting in Seattle. What is the will of, what is the interest of the body on this? Would members like to have Mr. Mum walk through it? Are members prepared to act today? I want to, Councilmember Cole Wells, what is your suggestion? Councilmember Gossett, what is your suggestion?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I prefer that we go ahead with this now, while we're here.
Okay, Councilmember Gossett?
And I prefer that we not go along with it now, and I'm gonna ask for a week's courtesy delay, because, Mr. Chair, when we were in executive session last week, and this idea came up.
And, Mr. Gossett, I just wanna caution you about executive session and revealing any content, so that if you can speak to the item without reference to executive session, that would be helpful.
Thank you. I'd like to speak to it without referencing executive session. I'd like to say that since I got back on the Employment and Administration Committee at the beginning of this year, I was kind of surprised, even though Carolyn said that all of us voted on, I guess, a halfway point, that we've already given to our chief of staff the authority to hire some lower-level staff that were not directors, et cetera. And then I noticed there was an increase in the number of staff, and two or three council members said, well, who's that? Who's that? We were hiring people without ever telling the county council, and certainly not our staff in general, about the hiring of these people. The only people that knew that they were being hired were the ones in the division where they were hired. And then we continued to do that, and then we were getting ready to hire director-level position without any advertising, any notice to staff, and I was so upset about that, I wrote a memo saying, what is this about? Let's have some order here. And then, you know, Chair Dombowski was very decent in saying, yeah, you're right, let's pull this back a little bit. And then we continued with hiring, identifying select people on staff that, their director or somebody thought was ready for promotion, and we were promoting them without even letting the people on the same staff know that they were being considered for jobs. And they said, we can do that, because we don't have to tell people about job openings anymore, we just promote them. And I thought that was pretty bad, so I think that this needs more work, therefore exercising the prerogative of asking for a week's delay.
Thank you, Councilmember Gossett. Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you. Well, one of the things I learned in Olympia, one of many, was the best policies are not actually made right after some kind of situation, that it takes some time to put everything in perspective, and then come at it again. So, I'm feeling rushed. I realize that good work has been done, but I'm feeling rushed. I haven't had any chance to ask questions since I stepped through, and I too am one of the people that have said, who's that? Oh, that's your new employee. Oh, okay, when did they show up? And I, I think part of our problem is that we never get to meet the people until they show up. So, I think there are many aspects of this that need to be done, but I think it would be better if we had a working group to really go through this, and so we all felt comfortable, because who we hire could be somebody that's around for the next 30 or 40 years, and I wanna make sure that things are done well and that it becomes a positive relationship from the very start. So, I agree with a courtesy hold, but also that we look at doing a work group.
Let me suggest this, and just having some dialogue with Councilmember Balducci here, who has done good work on this, that I generally, I have not had a chance to review it in detail, I believe that I like the general thrust of this direction of, with respect to our independent agencies and the continued empowering of them to run, I'll call it that way, run their operations. There are some issues in here, I think, around discipline and due process there that I wanna make sure I'm comfortable with. That was an area on the reorg motion that I looked at and asked that they're being appealed right. I think, I wanna make sure there's time for our labor, friends in labor, to weigh in. I know it's subject to bargaining, or parts of it might be. And, Councilmember Balducci, you correct me if I'm wrong, but perhaps that we, I'm committed to taking this up expeditiously as your chair, and would suggest that just maybe a few more days if we could bring it up at next, I'm kind of in the middle between Councilmember Gossett and Councilmember Lambert, who wants the working group, but Councilmember Gossett wants a little more time. That's kind of where I'm at. If we could have a little more time just to get familiar with it and start today with an overall briefing by Mr. Mum, but take action a week from Wednesday, would be what the chair suggests.
Mr. Chair, that seems like a very reasonable request. I can hear that some of my colleagues want a little more time to understand the details. I do wanna ask if we have full attendance next week, because I do think it's important that we all be there for something like this that affects the whole council, and I would intend to take it up next week.
Okay, that's a good question. I'm seeing nods that people are expecting.
Thank you very much, colleagues, and I have no objection to the request for courtesy of delay.
All right, Councilmember Balducci, thank you. Councilmember Vaughn Wrightbauer, you look like you're eager to, okay, just listening. So, Mr. Mum, knowing that, could you give us a kind of a high-level overview of the chart here, and we appreciate you preparing it?
Absolutely. Jeff Mum, council staff, as I said, the chart's divided into, basically, there's two major areas of hiring decisions and then employee discipline. So, I'll go through the hiring decisions first. The motion will clarify how, it basically clarifies current practice on the approval of job descriptions. Candidate recruitment is changed. It was that the EAC chair approved candidate recruitment, and now, so, the chief officer or independent agency officer, which is chief of staff or chief legal counsel or any of the agency directors, after they consult with the council chair and vice chairs, then they can start a recruitment. The change to the hiring process is this clarifies that, that two members from the district office will be on all of the hiring panels for interviews. That's been our current practice, but that has changed, and there's an amendment in your packet that further clarifies that it only applies to council staff, employees, not the auditor or the other independent, there was just a drafting area, I believe. The, see here, there's, hiring decisions are unchanged for, the process will remain the same for chief officers and independent agency officers. And then for all of the other staff, the, whoever, the chief of staff or chief independent agency officer does the hiring for the direct reports and everybody in their chain. So, we can continue down, work schedules are unchanged, performance evaluations are unchanged. Right now, on leave carryover decisions, so if somebody has extra executive leave, they have to use it that year, and that right now, the EAC chair has to approve an extra leave to get carried over into the next year. This would put that on the chief of staff or department or agency director. And then there is, right now, in the current organizational motion, there's actually a stated preference in the hiring process for legislative branch employees, and that is Flipping over to employee discipline, trying to give you the high level here. The, there are changes with written reprimands right now for the chief of staff and directors, that's, today, that's the chair's responsibility, and then in the motion, it has the chair and the council chair doing that, and then if they, in consultation with EAC, the same goes, and then if there's suspensions of pay that are less than 10 days for those chief officers and independent agency officers, EAC, right now, EAC makes that decision, and it's appealable to council. And under this, that's the council chair in consultation with EAC with, there's no longer that appeal process to council for suspension of pay of less than 10 days. If it's more than 10 days, then it's appealable to council. The same goes for folks who report directly to the chief of staff or independent agency officer, where the chief of staff would issue, right now, the chief of staff would issue the written reprimand, and it's appealable to EAC. And in the new motion, written reprimands are no longer appealable to EAC.
Can I just jump in there for a second? The reason that that, so, there's a very few little changes here that are, that go beyond the summary that I stated about changing the level of authority, and this one was because our rules, for some reason, said that there was an appeal for a written reprimand, no appeal for a suspension from zero to 10 days, but then an appeal for a suspension from 10 days or more, demotion or termination. So, it seemed odd that you can appeal a reprimand but not a suspension, and so we were just trying to clean that up, but if people prefer a different direction to cleaning that up, there was no sort of really deep philosophy there, other than it didn't make sense the way it was written.
Okay, that's helpful. Councilmember Lambert, have a question or comment?
Thank you. I'd like to know the volume of this. Are we talking about one a year, one a month, one a week, one a day? What is our volume here?
You mean, how many, we experience?
Right.
Maybe a handful of reprimands a year. I've only been in this position for six months, and I personally haven't experienced any.
So, that was my point. The issue is that when it comes to employee issues, I think it's important for us all to know about them, because if you know that there's a problem, half of us know there's a problem, not a half, half minus one, so we're not a quorum, and the other half, plus one, doesn't know about what's going on, it leaves people in the dark. And so, I think because the volume is so small, that I'd like to go the opposite, other opposite way, to make it available to all of us to know this, so it could be appealed. I agree with Councilmember Balducci that it should be consistent, for sure, but I think it needs to be, and I've heard employees say, well, I have to make sure I take care of people on the employment committee first, because, chair first, and then the people on the employment committee, and I have to stay in good with them so that nothing ever happens to me. And I don't think that's a good thing for anybody to think, and I don't think it's accurate either, so.
I don't think it's accurate either. I'm looking at Councilmember McDermott, he doesn't.
He doesn't think it's either.
Does that sound like a mayor joke?
Anyway, I think to make sure there's.
Thank you, Councilmember Lambert. I know it's a serious topic, but.
No, but it's good to have a levity of anyone, especially when we're both all hungry. So, I would like to see it go the other way.
All right.
So, thank you.
Councilmember Gossett, then we'll conclude this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Earlier in your presentation, you said something about removing representatives of the nine council members off of some kind of interview team, or did I misunderstand that?
It's very possible I was unclear. Current practice, at least in all of the hirings I've been involved with, involves representatives from councils, from district office staff on the hiring panels. This would, this actually, that's actually not in our rules right now. This says that would be in our rules for all council staff hiring processes, but it wouldn't, and it's not usually.
All council, except for the council members for staff?
Correct, and then.
Okay, I thought I was removing it from a requirement, and you're saying it's saying that it's gonna be part of all of the hiring decisions.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, Jeff, did you get through the chart?
No.
The, the, the things I haven't gotten through yet are, the same applies for the other staff with the staff, let's see, I think we just described the discipline process for chief officers, and now for other staff, yeah, we just described that too. So, it's a little confusing, because the current motion has, contemplates three types of staff, and this motion contemplates two types of staff, so I just had to make it more detailed.
All right. Is there anything else you wanna add?
That there is, I think I briefly described the amendment, and.
Amendment one in the package.
Mr. Chair, may I step in for a second?
Sure, Councilmember Balducci.
I just wanna make sure that it's clear, because Councilmember Gossett asked a question. Our current rules don't say anything about office staff participating in interview panels, but we have a practice of doing so, and so what the attempt was with this was to, this is one of those small number of things that isn't sort of directly on the main point, which is pushing authority down. But, so we thought, hey, let's reflect that and formalize it in the organizational motion, and so we'll keep doing it, and it will say that. However, when we wrote that in, we heard from the separate legislative staffs, like the auditor's office, I don't know if it was the auditor herself, but they said, wait a second, we've never been part of that process, they haven't included district staff, and so, and there, some of them are in the middle of hiring right now, and so we decided, rather than change the practice, we just wanted to reflect the practice, not change the practice. Of course, it is our, it is our prerogative as a body to change practice if we choose, but what we were trying to do here was reflect the practice as it exists today, and that's what the amendment does.
Okay. One more thing, Mr. Mum.
If I missed, would I, I wanna point out, I believe I didn't point out that major disciplinary decisions of suspensions of 10 days or more or termination are still appealable to EAC and to council.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Balducci and the other co-sponsors, thank you for bringing this forward. Let's take a look at it and expect action next Wednesday, a week from this Wednesday at our regularly scheduled council meeting. I think we have at least one representative of our represented workforce here, and as the chair would welcome any input that the representative workers are able to give or would like to give, if that's appropriate, between now and then in a formalized way. Councilmember Balducci.
Final comment, and then just a question. We wanted to be clear that this is all negotiable, and so, if adopted, there's language that says that it doesn't become effective as to our unionized workforce until we negotiate the terms, until and unless we negotiate with them.
Yeah.
And the second thing I wanted to ask, it was a question, is procedurally, can we just leave this table? It's a motion that's before us.
We can. That was my consult with our lawyer.
Thank you.
To find out what we needed to do. So, all right, it's a good introduction. Thank you for your hard work on it. This item will hold its place in its current status, which is moved and seconded and ready for action a week from Wednesday. All right, thank you very much. We'll turn now to the remaining items here from our local services, regional roads and bridges committee, council member, I'm gonna read this item into the record, motion 2019-0218.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 16 is proposed substitute motion number 2019-0218 relating to the appointment of Alan Predmore to the Board of Commissioners of King County Drainage District Number Five. Predmore to the Board of Commissioners of King County Drainage District Number Five.
All right. Is this similar to the following items? Do we want to do them all?
They have amendments.
They have amendments, okay. All right. Councilmember Dunn, you're the prime sponsor and been working on this.
Yeah, let me move proposed substitute number 2019-0218, and if I might speak to it, Mr. Chair.
All right, it's before us, go ahead.
Okay, so, there are five potential appointments here. The first started Drainage District Five, the one that we've heard so much about in the media. The next two items, 19 and 20, those items are for Drainage District Six. There's some ambiguity about whether we can appoint two out of the three commissioners at the same time, so I'm going to ask for a one-week courtesy hold on Drainage District Six. But going back to Drainage District Five, the three that I hope that the chair will allow us to take action on today.
Sure.
As many of you know, my office first learned of a police report involving Drainage District Five back in early March. We got a chance to refer that over to the state auditor and also to the Department of Elections, because it became clear, at least to me, that elections hadn't been properly held according to state law, and there was a substantial potential, perhaps likelihood, according to the police report, that some $420,000 had been misappropriated by a commissioner of Drainage District Five. We did a lot of work to try and get this in order, including putting together these candidates as well as legislation to put them through, so that they are, in fact, properly appointed consistent with state law. The auditor, the state auditor has not a forensic audit, and that report reports some $440,000 misappropriated, with up to a half a million possibly misappropriated into personal accounts and for cash. Obviously, a very serious situation. The King County Prosecutor's Office has been looking at it, and I'm told by the elected prosecutor that there will be action taken in the next week or so. That said, we got ditches that haven't been cleared potentially since the 1980s, and they need to be cleared. And it has a direct effect on our agriculture out there, as well as our stormwater system. So, I put, with the help of some local volunteers, a group of candidates who are willing to serve to get the district back online, responsible folks who are going to make sure the paperwork is handled properly, to make sure that contractors are hired and the ditches start to get cleared. So, item number one, the one I just moved, it's item number 16 on our agenda, would move Alan Predmore be put in as commissioner for Drainage District Five. We had a chance to see him at the Local Government Committee, and he's a very good man, willing to serve, and I'd urge your support.
Okay, and I have an amendment one in the packet, which addresses a bond requirements and other items.
Yeah, and this amendment goes to all three, the next three items, for the three candidates, and I would move amendment one at this time.
All in favor of amendment one, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Amendment one carries. Turning to the underlying motion now as amended. I think you've explained it. Councilmember Gossett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What has been our traditional role in verifying or authorizing members of drainage districts as commissioners? Have we interviewed them, or what? What have we required in the past? Because I'm not clear.
I think this is pretty unusual, and so, I don't know that we have a long history here, and we've really been deferring to Councilmember Dunn's leadership on trying to get this squared away.
Let me speak to it the best I can. I think, and I might be a little off on the date here, but these statutes that drainage districts fall under were written in, passed in 1894.
Before me.
Even before Pete, actually. And.
He's not in the mood for it.
You've got to get some food. And because of that, there are some real challenges for these small drainage districts in terms of how they conduct elections, and they're more like the King Conservation District, where a ballot isn't sent out. Julie Wise, the Director of Elections, has wisely started suggesting changes to state law in Olympia and to the Secretary of State, which is all good. But for the moment, the way the law reads, it gives the county council or county board of commissioners appointment authority when there isn't a validly elected person or there's a resignation. In this case, we don't have a valid election. We just haven't had an election there since the 1980s. I know, that's a shocking and sad fact. And so, we want to clean this up and make sure that they are lawfully appointed. They may choose to stand for election, they may not, but they will carry the full authority and weight of a commissioner, should we put them into place, so they can begin to do the important work of the district.
All right, Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you. I have a technical question. When you get a bond like this, is that like insurance, where you just pay for it once, or you actually put the money up? And if so, where does the money go? And then I just wanted to say that I got the pleasure of interviewing these three people, and it was amazing. These people know that they're coming into a situation that is going to have the eyes of many people on them. They're going to have to clean some things up that go back years and years and years and years. And these are people that are stellar in their communities, have lived there 20, 30, 40 years, highly respected. And not only did I highly respect them for whom they are, but highly respected them for taking on the really tough assignments. It's easy to do a ribbon cutting. This is not a ribbon cutting. So, I was appreciative of the people on the council.
Literally ditch digging.
It is ditch digging, but even there, there's some stuff in this ditch that I'm really going to need cleaning, so I really appreciated their willingness to get in and do the work.
Thank you. And Councilmember, would you be willing to take the answer with respect to the posting of the bond offline? All right, thank you very much. All right, I think we're ready to vote. It's been moved, it's been amended. The clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Balducci?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Gossett?
Aye.
Councilmember Colewells?
Aye.
Councilmember Lambert?
Aye.
Councilmember McDermott?
Aye.
Councilmember Up the Grove?
Aye.
Councilmember Von Reitbauer? Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, the vote is nine ayes, zero noes.
All right, 2019-0218.2 has been, as amended, has been adopted. Turning to item 17, Councilmember Dunn.
Very well, moving.
Can I read the title into the record?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just looking at a big clock up there and.
I'll read fast.
Thinking about Councilwoman McDermott.
Item 17 is proposed.
Yeah, that's true, but you're the chair.
Proposed substitute motion number 2019-0219 relating to the appointment of David Ballastras to the Board of Commissioners of King County Drainage District Number Five.
Councilmember Dunn?
Move a proposed motion number 2018, 2019-0218?
0219.
Sorry, 0219. 0219, moved.
Okay, it's before us, the amendment?
Move amendment one.
Amendment one does the same thing as the last amendment one. All in favor of amendment one, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Carries? Would you like to speak to this?
Just the same situation as the last one, exactly, except this is the district commissioner, the second one, David Ballastras, and I'd urge your support.
All right. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Balducci?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Gossett?
Aye.
Councilmember Colewells?
Aye.
Councilmember Lambert?
Aye.
Councilmember McDermott?
Aye.
Councilmember Up the Grove?
Aye.
Councilmember Von Reitbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair votes aye.
Nine to zero.
And we have approved, nine to zero, 2019-0219. Turning to item 18, Councilmember Dunn.
Very well, move 2019-0220 before you.
It's before us, and the amendment?
Move amendment one.
All in favor of amendment one, which does the same as the prior to amendment one, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? That carries, turning the underlying motion as amended.
Very well, this is the third and final appointment for Drainage District Five. Mark Van Weerigen, I just, these folks are willing to serve. I wish them the very best of luck. The county has made a promise to go down there in an initial meeting and provide legal and policy support to help them get underway, because this is sort of a, you don't have any transition, you don't have a commissioner that's been there forever that can help advise the new commissioner, so we're going to help. I stay committed to that. I'll be there at that meeting as well. This will be the last sort of official part of what we do to clean up the mess down there, except that I would urge those who've been involved in the policy and legal side of this, if there are cleanups to the state statutes from 1894 that you can suggest to Mac or Government Affairs Director, I would like to go down to Olympia and get some of these things cleaned up, because if King County, with our resources, aren't able to do it, it's not going to get done, and they're, people are going to run into this in other places across the state. With that said, I'd urge your support.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunn. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Balducci?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Gossett?
Aye.
Councilmember Colewells?
Aye.
Councilmember Lambert?
Aye.
Councilmember McDermott?
Aye.
Councilmember Up the Grove?
Aye.
Councilmember Von Reitbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, the vote is nine ayes, zero noes.
2019-0220 is approved.